There we go. All right, we're reconvening after closed session. We'll go ahead and...
Can I have a report again?
Yes.
From closed session? The only action tonight, the reading act, is on seven to zero vote, the board approved a three-month unpaid leave of absence with benefits to a classified employee at Saddleback College. And that's it.
Okay. We'll go ahead and rise for the invocation being led by trustee Lang.
As we begin the 2014 calendar year, we ask that this be a great year for the South Orange County Community College District and all of the many individuals involved in this community, our students, our faculty, classified staff, our administrative team, and all other permanent and temporary employees and volunteers and this board. Please help us to fulfill our collective commitments and responsibilities to the best of our abilities. Besides our own community, we also extend our hopeful wishes for the larger community that we are a part of, and especially to all our branches of the military and public employees in all branches of service. Help our country to continue to be great, that we shall be a beacon of life, liberty, and freedom. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and do recognitions and some commendations from Saddleback College.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Trustees, Chancellor, President Rockmore, guests. I am very excited today, or tonight, I should say, to recognize nine very wonderfully successful students of ours at Saddleback College. I wanted to congratulate, and I'll introduce something in a little bit, our nine students in our Bridge to Engineering program who were named to NASA's National Community College Aerospace Scholars Program. Bridge to Engineering is a grant funded by the Department of Labor that focuses on increasing the participation of underrepresented minorities, women, and veterans in the field of engineering, and helps students explore careers in engineering and places them on an academic pathway to become engineers. These hard-working students have been selected as aerospace scholars, a select group of students invited to visit NASA to participate in the National Community College Aerospace Scholars Program, which will be held February 26 through the 28th, and consists of two primary components. First is interactive web-based activities, including 20 hours of pre-work online and online interactions with participants and NASA engineers. And second, onsite experience at NASA, including an exploration team project directed by NASA engineers, briefings by engineers and scientists, and a tour of the NASA facilities through Space Center Houston. I'd like to introduce first off, two of the faculty members that have been working with these students. First is Dr. Jim Zoval and a student support specialist, Caitlin Choi. They're right here with, oh, there's Caitlin and there's Jim Zoval there. Also, Professor Frank Gonzalez is also helpful on this program. With that, we'd be thrilled to introduce the five students of the nine students that are with us here tonight. We have Tara Atkinson, Anthony Campbell, Corey Keenan, and Carter Brown. The other students that also will be joining these students are Edwin Lamoth, Sergio Flores, Jared Cathenaw, Shane Sharp, and James Don. So, students, we just want to say thank you very much, and we're very proud of you, and good luck at NASA.
Okay, next, we'll move on to, do we have any public comments? No? Okay. Then we have board reports, so we'll start with trustee Jay.
Yes. And just one thing, I wanted to congratulate the NASA recommended students that were just introduced. I think they've done a great job. I was an engineering counselor for many, many years, and believe me, the toughest thing we had to do with engineering-type students was to keep them in the program. So, good luck to you people, hope you do well in the program, and thanks a lot for your dedication. Thank you.
Trustee Jamal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this month, I attended the President's Breakfast at Irvine Valley College. I thought it went along well. I'm sorry I missed the Saddleback activities, I was out of town for a few days, but I'm sure my colleagues will report on it. With trustee Prendergast, I attended the IVC hosted Astounding Inventions tournament ceremony, whatever you want to call it, this weekend, and it's my first time actually attending, and what struck me in terms of the K-8 inventions is that how much common sense-oriented they were in finding these, developing these innovations. And I think that problem-solving skills are starting, appear to be starting at an earlier age, which I think is a good thing, or maybe they're just getting irritated more quickly and see their parents' frustrations, because a lot of the inventions were the result of things that their parents had difficulty doing. So that was a real pleasure to be there this weekend. And then finally, I just came this afternoon, I attended a portion of a program on college and career readiness. I know some others in the room here were there, I only, I saw the first part of it, sponsored by the Orange County Department of Education. This is the topic du jour, no question about it, for good reason, and I think that the challenges that are facing college and career readiness clearly transcend elementary, transcend elementary and secondary education as well as higher education, and we're really well positioned to do that, and interesting discussions about not just content learning, but techniques and how students actually learn, and that that's not measured, and which is something I think will be a good challenge for us to look at moving forward. Thank you.
All right, trustee Milchker.
This was the beginning of the semester, this spring semester, and prior to the beginning of the spring semester, there's the Faculty Development, Professional Development Week. Prior to that, it was called Flex Week, and prior to that, it was called In Service, they keep changing the name on me, but I actually attended meetings from eight in the morning till seven every day of the week, and I found that the state of the two colleges are incredibly going well. I heard both college presidents speak at their president's breakfast, I heard all the different groups, the constituency groups spoke, and all the heads of the constituent groups, I'll mention a few of them that spoke. I mentioned Glenn and Todd, there was Dan Walsh, Kathy Schmiedler, Scott Green, Mike Souter, Paula Jacobs, Deborah Fitzsimmons, David Bougay, Carol Hilton, Devit, Jane Rosenklans, Vincent Cooper, Bob Vermici, and Jim Gaston, and they were just incredibly excellent presentations, and we are in good hands, the students are in very good hands here. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Padberg.
All right, well, oops, sorry. Hello. I've been extremely busy and unfortunately was unable to go to Astounding Inventions, the first time I think I've missed in several years, and I was doing for the past two Saturdays, educating myself for the state bar, had to do all of my continuing education credits, so a total of 25 hours, so been busy with other things, and as you may know or may not know, I had to miss the last meeting in December, which is the first meeting I've missed in 15 years. So, but the reason was I opened up my home to a brand-new kitten, and he and I had a disagreement at four o'clock in the morning when he wanted to play and I wanted to sleep, and so he bit my hand, infected me, and I had to have 24-hours IV antibiotics, more than you wanted to know. Okay.
You got a minute.
No, that's enough, that's enough.
All right. So during Flex Week, or whatever we're calling it these days, I did attend the Faculty Association Luncheon hosted here at Saddleback Student Center, and that was well-attended, and I think the numbers are growing, so it shows some good things are happening there with the faculty and getting together and discussing ideas. Also, attended the President's Cup, first round, here at Saddleback, saw a very exciting overtime comeback for IVC, and then a trouncing of the IVC Women's Team by Saddleback, so it's tied going into the next round, so that'll be exciting. And then I attended the Classified Luncheon, and that was very well-attended as well, and very well-presented by Mr. Souter and Mr. Green, who's not here at the moment, so that was nice. And then also attended the Astounding Inventions, along with trustee Milchker and trustee Jamal. I think, you know, I've been involved in that now for seven years, first as a parent and as a husband of a teacher who's got children in her class doing the inventions, and then as a trustee, and the look on faces of the students and the joy and excitement they have, you know, and the award ceremonies and so forth, I think is only outweighed by the look of astonishment and joy and excitement from people who've never been to it before, and they go and they see the projects, and I think trustee Jamal expressed that. So, it really is an interesting, very powerful event in the education process, and you know, we're moving towards a common core in the K-12, so these kids have already been doing that, and it's just going to serve them very well in the future. There you go. Trustee Wright.
Thank you. I also attended In Service Week, and it was a very exciting week, it was good to be back and to see what's happening both at IVC and Saddleback College. I attended the IVC President's Breakfast and Welcome from eight to nine Tuesday, January the 14th, and also stayed and heard the presentation by attorney Barbara Ginsburg on civility in the workplace and building, maintaining, and repairing trust. It was very well-done, so I applaud IVC for doing this. And then on Thursday, I attended the In Service Activities, the President's Faculty Breakfast and Presentations by both Dr. Todd Burnett, our president of Saddleback College, and then also Dan Walsh, and their presentations were very good, so it looks like the semester's gotten off to a good start at both Saddleback College and IVC. I also just wanted to comment on this Bridge to Engineering program, that's an exciting program that happened during my last few years here at Saddleback College, and I'm excited to see the rewards. We started that program about three years ago, and it is doing well, and I want to applaud Dr. Jim Zoval and Frank Gonzalez, and also Caitlin Choi for their work there. It's a wonderful program, and I just want to congratulate those nine students for being selected. And that's my report.
All right, trustee Lang.
Thank you. Although I was unable to attend In Service Sessions, like many of my colleagues fortunately covered for me there, and I appreciate that, I heard from all of you and others that it went very well, and my congratulations to both of our college presidents on what appears to be just a great start to a new semester. I do also want to extend my congratulations and best wishes to our newest faculty members, and obviously hope to have the opportunity to meet all of them at some point in time. I did manage to attend a recent Orange County School Boards Association meeting at the Orange County Department of Education, both President Prendergast and Board Secretary Marshall Milchker were there as well. It featured a speaker who addressed the financial state of affairs under the governor's proposed new budget, and while there is, I think certainly, much to rejoice from an educational system-wide standpoint for K-12, the community colleges, the state colleges, and the universities, I suspect that the benefits to us as a basic aid district are probably somewhat muted, although indirectly it hopefully helps in reducing the perceived incentives that other districts have in challenging our funding status. Nevertheless, we should continue to be vigilant from a legislative standpoint. Also, it's important to note that the existing budget really does little to reduce system-wide debt associated with some of the more serious long-term system obligations, such as the state pension obligations. Finally, I wanted to personally congratulate Dr. Jerry Rudman on his election to receive a Western Psychological Association Fellowship. I've known Professor Rudman since I first joined this board and have great respect for his many talents and accomplishments, and that's my board report. Thank you.
Student trustee Robinson.
Well, last week was the start of the semester, and as I arrived on campus, I was reminded that the way people hunt for parking and the way animals hunt for food are really not as different as you might think. But, on a more serious note, I attended the Social Entrepreneurship Presentation, which was fantastic. It featured members of the foundation Public Squared, as well as Saddleback faculty, and the purpose is to harness the power of free-market investments to result in innovative ideas to solve social problems. This venture will feature the Orange County Social Entrepreneurship Competition, which will involve both students and investors to resolve local issues and build a sustainable business model. This is actually a really interesting topic because it focuses on what's the new trend of sustainability in green economics, and I think that once students become, students in the community that has become more transversion with this subject, I think it's going to be a lot more accepted and there'll be more solutions to current problems. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chancellor's Report.
I'd like to highlight two items on the agenda tonight, both of them are in the discussion section of the agenda. The first one deals with informing the board in greater detail about activities to comply with the requirements of the Student Success Act, and in this one, Irvine Valley College will be reporting on their plans and what they're working on to improve support for incoming students, including assessments, orientation, and educational plans. The second item in the discussion regards the replacement of the human resources and financial systems, and an explanation of the process that was used to make a selection, and also considerable work on evaluating all of the current processes and identifying inefficiencies that we can fix with the new systems, and there's no sense in having a slick new system that implements inefficient processes. So, it's been very worthwhile, you'll hear about that from a large team of people that were involved. After that information item, the board will be asked to approve contracts to implement that recommendation.
All right, thank you very much. College President's Report. Glenn, start with IVC, Glenn Rockmore.
Right, very good. I would like to start with an introduction in our audience here. I would like you to meet Dr. Kay Reagan, and she is retired as a Vice President of Student Services from Mount San Antonio College, and she has been hired to be the Acting Director of Student Life. So I'd like you to meet Kay. Kay, could you stand? And then with that, I think through most of your reports, you've given mine, thank you very much. No, I'll go ahead through. I thought the Flex Week went very, very well. I did make a change, I narrowed down my traditional opening and made room for the civility presentation that trustee Wright mentioned, and again, it's following through on one of the, in fact, the number-one recommendation that come, actually, goal that comes out of the district-wide strategic planning for issues that we need to try to work on and solve. So it was furthering that, was actually a recommendation from our faculty that we do that, and I thought it went very well, and maybe Kathy will mention that, I'm not sure. And then the Fall Leadership Retreat, I tried something really different there. I actually had each of our managers and directors and our campus leaders, including faculty and classified senate, be filmed, and they were filmed answering a couple of questions. One was, "What keeps you awake at night?", and then there were a few other questions that they may have had. I wasn't really sure how it was going to come out, but I was absolutely impressed with how each of them did come out, so that now the collection that we have of all of those presentations is actually titled Voices of Passion. It was that incredible. So, we spent half a day discussing the film, discussing the ideas that were coming out of that, and I have to say that it led to some great advances for the institution. We found ways to help each other, that certain people had issues or barriers and others could help with that, and it formed those bonds. So, that was great. The report was, it was one of the best, one of the best retreats that they had ever attended. I would like to just mention a benefit concert coming up on Thursday, February 6th, so next week, and it's going to be sort of a folk-rock music, but it's being done by one former member of The Byrds, if you remember The Byrds, I'm sure some of you do, one of my favorites from the past, but one of our own faculty members, Toulouse Engelhardt, is also going to be playing in that, so please come out, you'll enjoy it. Astounding Inventions, thank you all for attending. We continue to improve that, it's getting larger all the time. Next year, Microsoft is joining us, and we're actually going to start some little micro workshops for students to be involved with some of those larger corporations and learn what it's like to be in business and have your inventions go forward. So I think that's it for me.
Saddleback President, Todd Burnett.
Thank you. As some of the trustees mentioned, Flex Week and the week before our start of the semester went real well, and thank you all for attending, and thanks again to our Academic Senate at Saddleback for doing a fine job on that Training and Development Week. The start of the semester went well, and as student trustee Robinson noted, that parking is a little challenging, however, I will say, it's better than we expected, actually, trustee Robinson, in that, as you may all know, we started construction of our new sciences building, so a major student parking lot was closed down, and you might notice a little change out there in the bowl, right outside this building here, we have a new little temporary lot down there with another 115 spaces, that really has made a difference in to mitigate some of that parking, maybe not as good as we would hope, but it's there. There are two major initiatives that Saddleback is undertaking this semester, one of, actually two of them were mentioned, one of them indirectly. The first one, I'm very proud to be working with my colleague, Dr. Glenn Rockmore, and everybody at IVC, also chancellor Portner is working diligently on this as well. The State Department of Education last week issued and released a request for application for a $250 million California Career Pathways Trust Grant. I think that's probably the largest grant I've ever seen that the state of California ever do, and that's where I sit indirectly, trustee Jamal, you went to the meeting over there with OCDE, dealing with career readiness. This grant's purpose is actually to partner the community colleges with K-12 to create, and with the business and industry to create, we dub it K-Career, but creating K-14 education and training programs for students to go into emerging, high-growth, high-wage jobs in California. With that said, as I mentioned, IVC, Saddleback, and our entire district is going to be taking a leadership position in creating a county, Orange County-wide grant to hopefully get $15 million, Matt. You'll hear much more about that in the future. Finally, the Social Entrepreneurship Competition, I'm going to talk to you more about it at the next meeting, so, but thank you for bringing that up, trustee Robinson, coming to that meeting, and you forgot to mention the President's Cup, Mr. Rockmore.
I left it to you.
Oh, you left it to me, on your thing here, the second half of the President's Cup is coming up, is on Friday, February 7th, 7:30, please be there, the score is one-to-one, and we're excited to keep that tradition going, and may the best teams win.
All right, and for the first time, moving up in the agenda, Associated Student Government Reports, we have with us tonight from Saddleback.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Lydia Anatolo, I am the President of Honors Students, but I'm sitting in for President Barman Sabahy. It's always an honor to be in your presence, and as a student, we are so humbled to have an amazing team that works for us, to be all we can in this world. Two weeks ago, we had our retreat, and the theme was community, we as student leaders to come together, how can we best work together this semester, better yet, leave a great legacy for the coming student body. And I would love to also talk about what's happening in the Honors Council. We have two conferences coming up, we're working on our research in May, in April, to go to UCI, so 20 of the students who applied for that were accepted, and it was such, it's a great honor for all of us to be accepted in that, and in May, we'll be going to Berkeley to also put in our research, so, and it's all of your work, and you have supported us as students to take in our work. I'm grateful that student member David Robinson talked about parking, it is literally a struggle, it's survival for the fittest in the parking lot to get a slot, and it's on a sudden note that last week, I was, I waited for 30 minutes, and I couldn't find a spot, so as a student, I had to go to class, as African, I really needed to go to class. So I parked across the street in the parking lot, in the parking sector of the business center, going back two hours later, my car was towed. I had to pay $250, and I'm just speaking on behalf of other students, I'm sure I'm not the only one who's going through this, and being a science student, I'm so grateful that we're building a new science center, I'm so excited for those other students who are going to be in that science center, but also, and I know you're working tirelessly to find better parking lots for us, I don't want another student to cry over that, but thank you so much.
I can tell you from personal experience that that is a skill you will take all the way through the rest of your life. When you go to a swim meet and you have to find parking, you learn how to vulture at the end of the aisle, and you wait until people walk, you know, there's a skill set there you will keep with you for the rest of your life. Thank you. All right, we don't have any board requests for reports that I'm aware of, so we'll move on to discussion item 4.1, which is Irvine Valley College Approach to Student Success Act of 2012.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Linda Fontenella, the Vice President of Student Services for Irvine Valley College. I have here with me my colleagues, Dr. Liz Cipres, Dean of Counseling, Robert Melendez, Counselor and the Chair of the Counseling Program, Tiffany Tran, Counselor and Articulation Officer, and Michelle Scharf, Counselor and Director of the Transfer Center. It is our pleasure this evening to share with you one of our new and innovative strategies that we are implementing at IVC to meet the Student Success Act of 2012 Recommendation for Recommendation 2.2, which requires students to participate in diagnostic assessment, orientation, and development of an educational plan.
Good evening, I'm Liz Cipres, I'm the Dean of Counseling at Irvine Valley College, and I'm very honored to be here tonight to show you one of our first initiatives to meet the Student Success Act of 2012. The School of Guidance and Counseling was charged with doing something to try to get students to get educational plans, and one of the brainchild was an accelerated educational planning course, which was developed by Tiffany Tran, Articulation Officer, so I'd like to turn it over to Tiffany.
Good evening. Again, my name is Tiffany Tran, Counselor and also Articulation Officer at Irvine Valley College. Today, as indicated, we're going to talk about Recommendation 2.2, which requires students to participate in diagnostic assessment, orientation, and the development of educational plan. Due to time, we're just going to talk about the educational plan, and in your packet, you have, there's an IVC folder, I believe, in front of you, so in your packet, if you can open that up, and in there is a sample of educational plan of the engineering student. So, that's a sample of MAP, My Account Plan, it's a wonderful software that we're using for, to help students with the educational plan. So as you can see, first, part of MAP is breaking down the gen-education courses, what students completed and what they still need. The second part of MAP is the major courses, so what students need to transfer to UCLA in this exam. So what students need to transfer to UCLA in this example to go to as a chemical engineering major. And then the third part breaks down by semester, exactly each semester, what the student's going to take for the next two years they're going to be at Irvine Valley College. So by the end of this plan, they know exactly what classes, when to take them, and then when to transfer. So this is what we call the comprehensive educational plan. And it's been reviewed by a counselor. So I just wanted to share that example with you. So when planning for this recommendation, we first looked at what services are working really well in the counseling center. So we know that 101 appointments are working really well in the counseling center. We know that the workshops are working really well. We know that our Counseling 1 course is working really well in helping students create these plans. But we also know that we need to also continue working with instruction. We really need their help in achieving this goal. So the best way to do that is to expand our counseling curriculum. And so that's how I would start thinking, we know that there's a large part of our student population that know exactly what they want since day one at IVC. They know they want to go to UCI for bio major. They know they want to go to Cal State Fullerton for business major. They know they want to go to IVC to complete a child development AS degree. So we know that for sure that that's what they want. So then we created these accelerated courses. They're only .5 units, they're eight hours long total, and it would be specifically gearing for those students who know exactly what they want. And we would have them use MAP in these courses. So we created Counseling 200A, B, and C. Counseling 200A are for those students who only want to have an AAAS degree or certificates from Irvine Valley College. Counseling 200B only for UC students. Counseling 200C only for Cal State students. So we get them in, explain to them Cal State requirements, UC requirements, what they need. We sit down, go over the plan with them. We check the plan, answer any questions they might have. And then that's how we can complete the comprehensive educational plan. And with your packet also is the flyer for the courses. And when students are done with this, they will then be able to maintain their priority registration time, which is very, very important for them when they're trying to get their classes. So the second half of the presentation, I'm going to turn it over to Robert Melendez.
Good evening. So the next thing I want to show is whenever you have any new program or course, that one of the biggest things you have to do is promote it. So we did a great effort in trying to make sure we did that, whether it was using the in-house Sherpa nudges to all students to get the information out there, not only about the changes, but about the classes too, and specifically what the importance there was, to of course, social media, to traditional flyers, posters, things like that. We presented during Flex Week this year and last year, well, the last two semesters, in making sure the faculty knew about the program, staff and of course administrators too, just about all the changes, everything else that was coming up. Now, when we first started looking, because we only offered this for the first time in the fall semester, we actually had some very good preliminary data that came through. So as you can see there, we did offer nine sections. We had different sections for different ones. But ultimately, 212 students enrolled at census through all nine classes. And that was a completion of 100% completed academic plan that actually took the course. And 96% actually received a grade of C or better. So when we're looking at efficiency, because that's really what we're trying to do here, what was different about this, it was accelerated program to really try to make sure we honed in on the academic plan and making sure students got that. So were we successful? Well, with eight hours of instruction per class with nine classes, we're looking at 72 total hours of instruction. When we look at that, we yielded a total of 212 academic plans for only 72 hours of instruction in total. When you compare that to counseling hours, 72 hours of counseling yields about 72 ed plans. So from an efficiency standpoint, I think it was great and very successful. But of course, when we start talking about success, one thing we want to do is of course hear from the students and see what they thought of the class too. So this next video is going to show you that.
I took Counseling 200 course because I thought it would help me in achieving my goal of transferring within a reasonable time and everything being outlined and put in front of me rather than put in my head. I liked that it was a direct one-on-one with the teacher. You got to visualize your mapping of your education on a computer and know what classes you're going to take, when you're going to take, and how long it would take to achieve it.
I took the counseling class for two reasons. One, it was going to be a future requirement. And second, I needed to set a solid degree plan so I could move swiftly through this process. I liked the sharing among the students and the one-on-one direction from the instructor. I thought it was very informative, especially for other students, to hear what everyone wanted to do, because we all were different. And I think it gave other students ideals. I really believe that every student in their first or second semester should have to attend this course, simply because it'll keep them on track. And if they do change or want to change at the last minute, then they really have a good idea of what they have and what they need.
My name is Barbara Faruk. My major is chemical engineering. First came to IVC, I didn't really take any counseling classes. I was unsure of what classes I needed to take to transfer. I was unsure of my direction. So I ended up taking a lot of classes I didn't really need, I didn't really want to take, and I didn't get anything from them. I wasted a lot of time, a lot of resources, taking those classes. However, if I had taken Counseling 200B my first semester and made a map and looked at those qualifications needed to transfer, I wouldn't end up taking those classes because I'd know what I needed to take. And that would really help me save that time, save that resources, and be better off.
I taught the Counseling 200 classes, and I taught Counseling 200A, B, and C. It was a very positive experience because the students were able to walk away with their developed academic plan, and they were able to choose the school that they wanted to transfer to. A lot of students came into these 200 classes, they were first-time students, so they didn't know what it took to transfer to the UC system. So I feel that they left the class with the knowledge that they needed to be a successful transfer student. So they learned how many units they needed to transfer and what were the transferable courses at IVC that they can take to transfer over to the UC system.
You know, I really enjoyed teaching the courses. I feel like the courses are an extension of a counseling session. In counseling sessions, we do a certain amount of teaching, but when you're teaching a class, you get to do so much more teaching. It's a lot longer than a half-hour session that we usually get with the one-on-ones. We taught these Counseling 200 classes for a total of eight hours. So I was really able to spend a lot more time with the students, and they were able to walk away with a learning experience. I think this is a really great solution to the Student Success Act mandate of each student having an academic plan. Obviously, we don't have enough counseling hours available to sit down one-on-one with each and every student. So this is a really great way of actually using the modality of group counseling to sit down with every student, basically. So if I'm with a group of 45 students in a period of eight hours, it's a much better and more effective use of time than...
Okay, so moving on to look at what's next. Of course, we have more sessions that we're actually running in the spring, and we will have three more in the summer. And then what we need to do is continue the dialogue to expand it further. One idea we have is pairing these half-unit classes with other instructional areas, namely like psychology, whether it's English, whether it's biology, whatever the case may be, to try to get some more honed-in academic plans for specific majors. And then lastly, looking with the matriculation funding that's coming forward, we have a lot of areas in which we're looking to try to hopefully expand what we're doing on top of the Counseling 200 classes. So of course, opening up a MAP workshop area to where we would have a MAP lab is what we're kind of calling it now, 30 to 35 computers that we can use. And then of course, making sure that we're not duplicating efforts with our supportive services programs, whether it be EOPS, DSPS, even veterans, any of those programs, and making sure we're being efficient and effective as possible. And open it up for questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Trustee Jamal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your presentation. That was very clear, concise, one of the best student success presentations I've seen since I've been here.
Thank you.
I just had a question about what percentage, if you know, of current students do not have a comprehensive academic plan?
Well, that's a great question. Actually, when we were looking at the research, we were trying to get those numbers too. We have put in a request to try to get some type of gauge on that. Honestly, it's hard. When you look at just IVC...
Ballpark.
Yeah. Ballpark of academic plans, maybe it's close to 40 to 50%. I don't know. I don't know, Jim. Yeah. Yeah. Unfortunately, you know, you have a lot of different types of students, of course, whether it's a certificate student to a student that's looking UCLA/UCI transfer. So kind of the amount of times they come into counseling to get academic plans is going to vary. But I would say, for those that are kind of transferring students, the numbers would probably be very high, I would probably say in the 60, maybe 70%. But overall, it'd probably be more around 50.
So that leads to my next question, what's our goal then, as far as...
Well, honestly, our goal is dictated by the Student Success Act of 100%. So we need to, and the good thing is, we're going to have the current students grandfathered in. So really, we're talking about the students starting fall of 2014, starting their fall...
Next year.
Yeah, fall of 2014. Yeah. And that's what we're looking at as far as making sure we start with them and making sure that we get the academic plans done in a timely manner. And Counseling 200, of course, would be one of those.
Thank you. How does this Counseling 200 compare to the Counseling 10 that you have the early college students taking? Because it seems very similar, but I know that obviously is an accelerated course.
Right. Well, the Counseling 10 is actually a study skills course. So it's very specific in just focusing in on college study skills, especially in the early college program, prepping the students for the academic rigor of counseling or college courses. So that, and that does not include an academic plan as a part of the course outline or record with the Counseling 10. The course that would probably be more similar to it would be the Counseling 1, which is a one-and-a-half unit course. The difference between a Counseling 200 class and a 1 is obviously one extra unit with the 1, but also there's time management, there's kind of college survival skills, things like that that are added in. And that's where the acceleration part comes from in the 200s. It's for the student, like Tiffany said, who kind of know what they want, are kind of very prepared for school, which a good number of our students are. And it's really trying to hone in and giving them exactly what they need as far as an academic plan is concerned.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Trustee Milton.
Yeah, first of all, thank you. I thought it was really an excellent presentation. I particularly liked the little clips of the students and what it meant to them. And I know that Jim Gaston and Bob Bermuda are going to be going to Washington DC to actually try to get some funding for the MAP programs and the Sherpa programs they've developed for our students and help our students get through in a most efficient way. And I just wondered, how do you, when do you reach the students to try to encourage them to take the Counseling 200 classes? Because I know it's a very efficient way of working with the students.
Right. And that's where the marketing came in. So we did the Sherpa nudges to all the students. We put reminders on my site. And actually, as we were kind of interviewing students and trying to get some student testimonials, I noticed that a lot of the students mentioned that the my site kind of ad, the pop-up that came there in the news feeds, was one of the reasons they knew of the class. And then of course, the in-person kind of promoting of the course as the students came in too.
Great. You're reaching these students where they live in the social media arena. I'm just thinking, maybe Jim and Bob might want to use some of those film clips of the students when they go to Washington DC, because, you know, it speaks volumes of having the students say how it affected their lives. Okay, thank you.
They're available for you, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Just like that, it was easier getting them to sign up for the classes, a little bit more difficult for getting them to do the films. We had to give them a $20 gift certificate to In-N-Out to get them to do the film.
Oh my God, that's very smart, very, very good marketing.
All right, thank you very much. Hold on just a sec, before we get, wait, stop her, stop her. You can't leave yet. We, are you guys in on this?
Absolutely. He's covering for me, isn't he?
Trustee Padberg has started a collection. And we have a little money to offset your incurred cost on the towing. Jersey J is still getting his... So I believe we collected $160 to help toward your, offset your costs. Now you can go.
You can't go now.
All right. Next, we have item 4.2, Business Process Analysis for the HR Financial Software System Procurement and Implementation Project.
Good evening, President Prendergast, Board of Trustees, and audience. Tonight, we will be providing a presentation on the Business Process Analysis that has been taking place over the last two years and the recommendation for a new HR financial software system. So we're looking at items 4.2 in your agenda and also 6.1. Besides myself, we have Dr. David Begay, Vice Chancellor of HR and Employee Relations, Carol Hilton, who is the Saddleback College Vice President of Administrative Services, and Davit Kachatrian, the IVC Director of Fiscal Services here tonight to also present along with me. So what are we going to go over tonight? We're going to be going over the BPA processes that we have done over the last two years and what we learned from them. We're not going to go into details, but we're just going to go over your, what we've learned, how the informed RFP process when we went out for an HR financial system, the process that we use for making a recommendation, what a recommendation was, and also, we're going to go over the project implementation timeline and our next steps. What were the issues and challenges? Well, you might not be aware of this, but our district's current software systems for HR and financial systems are very old and out of date. We have what's called Charms, which is the homegrown HR system that we have that's 25 years old, and our escape system, which is 14 to 16 years old, depending how you count it, which we want to escape from. That in and of itself isn't really any issue, because they no longer are current and adequate for our needs. We have additional safeguards that we want to have built into the systems for compliance and internal controls. And we also have systems that are not integrated and comprehensive. They can't do everything that we want them to do. So therefore, a lot of our processes across the district, and particularly at the colleges, are manual processes, very paper-driven and very labor-intensive. So what we wanted to do was, we wanted to understand a lot of these business processes that were very inefficient and not working for folks, and folks were very complaining, very much complaining about. And we wanted to understand those so that we can have processes that will handle the size of district that we are now, the colleges have both been grown over time, as well as the complexity and the volume that we're experiencing, that the manual systems and our current electronic systems cannot handle. So what we knew we wanted to do was improve processes and services to our colleges as well as to faculty, staff, and students.
Hi, good evening. And so why did we do a BPA process before we went out for proposals for a new system? Well, the reason actually was very clear when we went through that process. And the way we did this is that we had two days. The first day, we had a team of staff, faculty, and administrators and managers from both colleges. This was a real team effort, the colleges are really behind this, and we worked very well together, and district services. And what we did is mapped the current processes based upon the function. So for example, let's take the payroll process. So we said, okay, we want to pay somebody. And we mapped the entire process all the way through until the actual payment was made at the end. And we mapped that out on a chart. And boy, was that complicated. And everybody that touched that process along the way. And so then what we did, we went home all very depressed, although I have to say, it was strangely satisfying to get off your chest all the anxiety about these processes. And so then the next day, we all came back and said, okay, forget that. And so then the next day, we all came back and said, okay, forget that. If it was our ideal, think outside the box, what would we do? What would this process be? And of course, there was no bad idea, and we really went to town. And so the next day, we became with very efficient processes and said, forget the system, just how would we like it to work? And so we came from this very complex business process we currently have, very inefficient, to this very small nimble efficient process day two. And so therefore, we understood our inefficiencies and what we needed in a new system, and we had the ideal model for a new system. Simple, user-friendly, compliant, of course, we always have to be very compliant, but also transparent, because we could see every step along the way in a new system where the process was. So this enabled us to take this scope of work and the definitions of what we want and use that in the criteria in Request for Proposals. And that the Request for Proposals would be a much higher standard than the systems that we have right now, significantly higher, because we really did think outside the box. So what we also wanted to avoid was the Costco effect. We all know, we go to Costco, we want bread, milk, and cheese, and we walk around, and we have a cart piled high. We come home with all these great things, and we get home and we forgot the milk. Well, we didn't want to forget the milk in our excitement in this process, and so we really wanted to be sure we got the right ingredients and that we didn't spend too much on all these other flashy things that just caught our attention. So it was a very good disciplined way of doing this. And so we naturally didn't want a new system that created disappointment, because we had these old processes that would just fit into a new system and nothing really changed. And so if we automate a mess, all we have is an automated mess, and that's what we didn't want. And like most large, complex organizations, we have developed processes and procedures around system capabilities, our current system, and around mandates and compliance and shadow systems, et cetera. And so we really self-examined, and we really were critical of ourselves, and I think this is very typical in any large organization. Over the years, these kind of processes really do get out of hand. So what BPAs were conducted? Well, the functions are on the slide, and I'm not going to read them all to you, but basically every function that HR or finance touches, we went through every one of those in a two-day process. There will be more follow-up BPAs to further refine the processes. And the other thing is too, we don't want to define these BPA processes and then not want to let go of the old systems. There's a certain comfort level in that, so we have to let go. And so we have to, as we move forward, we have to let go as we move into with a new system. So what did we learn from the BPAs? Well, this is, this slide is not an exaggeration, I can assure you. A lot of these issues are real. And the ones I want to point out are the confusion, the inefficiency. It's really hard to figure out our processes and procedures. If you're a new employee or you do a process once or twice a year, it's really hard to figure that out. Plus, we have staff walking all over campus with bits of paper to make sure that they get the process followed. And I can see trustee Wright smiling because he's lived that. And so this, and so we hope to avoid that. We'll have to set a walking program up after school to keep, after work to keep people fit, but we're going to avoid them walking around campus. So if the board approves this system tonight, I just have to say that the colleges and district services are very excited about the prospect of a new streamlined system and processes. Thank you. And with that, I'll pass it to David.
This lady in the slide, she's already taken advantage of our Employee Systems Program, so you can imagine the frustration that she has. With that being said, if you look at the next slide, our focus really is, we want to have a one-source system. By that, we mean that we want to have one entry point, because right now, sometimes developing different kinds of systems, there'll be multiple processes going on at the same time. So one entry point, one initial source, we want it to be current, something that's not 25 years old, although by some measure, a lot of us, if we were 25, we would think ourselves very youthful. Anyway, that being said, we want to make sure it's fast, we want to make certain that the money that we spend on this will be something, it's an investment in the future. So it'd be fast, current, long-term is a big issue, and we want it to be online. So by being online, we would have electronic reminders coming to us when our process needs to be addressed, so we get an email from that. And then moving on to the next slide, if you look over here, we want to go through and eliminate something called shadow systems. In the slide, it says eliminate side systems, but sometimes when somebody sends a form over, they track when the form was sent and everything else, and so they have multiple systems operating at the same time. So there are side systems, there are shadow systems. We want to eliminate that, and the process by doing that is that we eliminate the multiple entry, we'd have one system again, and then by the time we're done, we'd be really transparent. We've learned that transparency works really well, because in the process, you can see whose desk it's sitting at. You initiate the one form, it goes to the next person, you could see if that person is working on it, if they've approved it and it's going on, or if they have questions, they can respond right away. And so everybody gets to see what's going on in the system. That's a big deal. We've had a lot of success with that right now, and the biggest thing is reducing operational costs, but then bringing that efficiency, and everybody knows what's going on. And then finally, we went through in the BPAs, our Business Process Analysis, we found a series of common themes emerging throughout the entire district. And with that, we've used those common themes, we looked at the overall scope of what work needed to be done, we wanted to make certain that we met the basic needs of each department involved, and then any additional things that needed to be added to our Request for Proposal. So from that, we developed that, and then we wanted to make certain that the evaluation of the whole process, the RFP, was objective, transparent, and fact-based. So with that, let me introduce Davit, and he could talk about the next process, about the recommendation.
Good evening. As a result of our RFP, in response to the Request for Proposals, we received seven initial responses from vendors, and the seven responses were narrowed down to three vendors that were invited for extensive, in-depth interviews and demonstration. The participants from the district included a variety of participants from both the colleges, the district services, faculty, administration, and staff, and different offices, including purchasing, HR, finance, literally all the different offices that would be, ultimately be impacted as a result of the new program. And I believe at some point, the number of participants exceeded or approached 120 participants and were pleased that we had a open participation and inclusiveness throughout this process. And the product that we're recommending today, as the District HR Financial Software System, is called Workday Incorporated or Workday, alongside, along with the implementation partner called Cedars Crestone Incorporated. As we all know, you might have the best product in the world, but if you don't implement it and do the transition properly, it may not achieve, you may not achieve the success that you're counting on. So the two products are recommended here, we're pleased to do so. Why Workday? Well, first of all, Workday meets and exceeds all the requirements that my colleagues, just colleague laid out, identified through the BPA processes. We have a specific set of needs that were identified, and Workday meets those needs in terms of both functionality and business capabilities. But beyond that, it also is a unique product in terms of distinguishing itself from the other products that we reviewed. In terms of technology, it's cutting-edge. It actually takes advantage of some of the modern trends in administrative software market. It is based on, it's cloud-based and has multi-tenant software-as-a-service computing capabilities. It is object-oriented technology. Essentially, these are the cutting-edge technologies out there that Workday takes advantage of. And as a user, what it means to me is that it allows me to do, to handle big, large amounts of data on a very fast and efficient manner, and it is a forward-looking technology that will, we believe, serve the district for many, many years to come, once, of course, approved by the board. In terms of technological advantages, you can see many, many aspects of the new technology, of the product that Workday has to offer. Just to pick a couple that resonated with me and my colleagues, I'm sure, fast performance is very important for us. You can actually get the data that you need, that you have access to literally in seconds as opposed to waiting for minutes or hours at a time. You don't even have to request, it's right there for you with this product. Another aspect that's important for us is the maintenance and upgrade component. A lot of the work is done by the vendor and is delivered to us in an almost consumable manner, and all we have to do is turn on the switch and accept it. It's not pushed, we can do it when we want it, when we need it. And of course, the one I like particularly is the mobile aspect. The program is available on any mobile device, be that a cell phone or tablet, and information is available to the decision-makers and users when they need it. They can get their dashboard, the to-do list, all the activities that they need to take action on, they can take it with them on a conference, hopefully not vacation, but they can do that as well. And I think that's about it, and it's, of course, employee and student-centered. We're happy to present it to you, to you this product. And with that, I'm going to turn it over back to Dr. Fitzsimmons for a project timeline and some closing remarks.
I would like to expand on just the mobility of this product. Your dashboard as board members, if you were to turn on and go into Workday, will be different. It would be aimed for a board member's experience, what a board member would want to see on their dashboard versus someone who's the backdoor type of accounting person. Their dashboard will be different, aimed at someone who's doing heavy accounting functions, accounts payable, account service people, whatnot. Their dashboard is going to look quite different based on their workload that they're going to do in the office. For a faculty member, their dashboard is going to be interesting, and it's going to be something very helpful for them. It starts to push some of their information to the faculty member that they would have to formally request from their department chair or their secretary, or even HR or some of our offices, and sometimes wait a long time to get. For instance, they'll be able to see their leave reporting, they're going to be able to submit their travel requests via their iPad or their mobile device and the documents that they need to support that request. So some of this is going to be very user-friendly for folks out there, based on whatever their roles are at the colleges or at the district, and this is going to be creating a different experience for folks that, in some cases, might take weeks or months or even to get reports or do the things. They're going to be able to do some of their own stuff, they're going to be able to see their own departmental budgets, that kind of thing, and it's going to be at their fingertips. So there's some amazing qualities to the software that we're very excited to be able to implement. As far as the project timeline, this project, if approved tonight, is pretty short, and it starts immediately. So what we're looking at is an 18-month period of time for both phases. We have two phases to this project. The first phase starts immediately with developing the chart of accounts. As you can expect, we can't really set up anything until the chart of accounts, all the account structure is set up. Then the first phase, which you'll see on this chart in blue, is what we call HCM, and that's really all the human resources stuff, as well as the payroll and the benefits, everything that sort of you think about employee resources type of things. That project phase should be over by the end of this calendar year, and there's overlap. So then you're going to see the green, I guess it is on the screen, for the fun, everything else, so that's all the financial information and all the business services type of functions. It's going to overlap a little bit throughout the summer and through the fall, and we anticipate being able to go live for financial by beginning between the two fiscal years. So at the end of fiscal year 2014, at the beginning year of fiscal year 2015, which starts July 1st of 2015. So that's the project implementation schedule. As far as implementation, as you can imagine, it's going to be a lot of work, but worth it in the end. We'll be making the process changes that would have identified along with as we go and doing appropriate, you said, more policy changes, administrative regulation changes, and supporting documentation, so that it goes along with the implementation of the software. One of the first things we'll be doing as a steering committee is developing the project plan with milestones. So what you can expect is we'll be really honing in on what it's going to take, who it's going to involve, and what we're going to do with milestones. And as you can imagine, it's going to involve the steering committee, but it's also going to involve our consultants that we're hiring for this, and basically, a lot of college input, you know, along the way, not only just on business process changes that is going to involve a lot of folks, but also for helping testing and seeing if it works well for them. So various folks, whether it's faculty types of folks, or whether it's other people involved in the various departments and colleges, we want the continued support and broad-based input that we've had along the way for the last two years to be involved in this very important piece. So with that, I want to say thank you to everybody who's involved on this project so far. Here's a list of the HR Financial Systems Software, RFP Procurement Steering Committee members. It's had involvement from the college folks, as well as purchasing, facilities, HR, payroll, all the various financial areas, as you can expect, and hundreds of college faculty, classified staff, administrators, and managers, who both participated in the Business Process Analysis, as well as the vendor demos during those long weeks, and that was a lot of time they put in to really go through the vendor demonstrations. In addition, we've had a lot of support from Vice Chancellor Bob Bermeche and the district IT staff. They spent a lot of time analyzing the technology. We had additional demos just brought in for the three vendors, just going over the technology, so separate from the functional needs of the folks at the colleges. We also had two consultants helping us with all this review, Strat Information Group and Gartner Group, to review not only as we went through the RFP process, but also contract negotiations and the scope of work. And lastly, of course, local council, who AALRR, and Office of County of Department of Education, both assisted me in the contract negotiations and reviewing the contracts. And with that, we wanted to turn to item 6.1 in your agenda and have you take a look at that item and see if you had any questions regarding the presentation, the Business Process Analysis, or item 6.1 before you go for the approval process and discuss. We're all here to answer any questions, and then also Vice Chancellor Bermeche is here for any deep technical questions that, of course, I cannot answer.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and advance item 6.1 officially, which is the approval of agreements for HR Financial Software System Implementation Partner, Workday, Cedars Crestone Inc. I believe we would need a motion, and then we can take discussion questions on the item. Okay, we have a motion to divide the question?
I'll second that.
Okay. So he wants to divide the questioning for 4.2 from 6.1, he wants to.
Sure.
Between the two vendors. He wants to divide the two vendors.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, perfect. All right. So we have a motion to divide the question based on the vendors. So we'll go ahead and take a vote on that motion, and then we can entertain a motion to passage of 6.1A and then 6.1B, I guess we'll call it.
We have to read the votes.
Right. You have to, you have to have a motion on the floor to discuss. So the question before you now is to divide 6.1 into 6.1A and 6.1B based on the vendors. That, and we have a second from trustee Milchker. All those in favor of dividing the questions, vote please. There we go. So it's unanimous, seven yes votes, one student advisory yes vote. All right, so now I will entertain a motion to pass or to approve 6.1A.
I make the motion.
All right.
I'll second that.
Now we have a second. So now we can ask questions about the first vendor, which is Work.
Workday.
Workday, okay. And I guess in that, in part of that, you can go ahead and ask any general questions you have about the process and the previous presentation, and that would then, I guess, cover any questions you might have about 6.1B. All right. So I have a request to speak from trustee Milchker.
Yes, is my mic, okay. Yes, I forgot to mention Davit's name when I mentioned all the names of all the people that made presentations. He made a presentation with Kathy Schmider during, in service that I attended. And I also attended a presentation given by most of the people up there about this, and I thought it was very informative and helped me understand it. It seems like, you know, after 25 years of using kind of an antiquated system, it's time to move on, and it seems like the process went, was a very good process, and I thank you. How did, did you have committees of the staff in the colleges, or how did you get the colleges' faculty, staff, administrators to participate in this decision and these discussions?
Well, depending on the topic, whether it was payroll, hiring processes, onboarding, there were people of interest that not only dealt with this on a daily basis in their jobs, but had interest or complained about the process. So we invited folks, and we had large participation and interest. They want to be part of the solution. They wanted to be able to tell us what was wrong with the current processes and what they felt, what direction we needed to go in. Thank you. Thank you.
Trustee Padberg.
Okay, mine is really more of a comment than a question, but I just am so impressed that we're finally doing this. This is one of the most important things that we do in this district is hiring. And I know it's been a long, cumbersome process, so I'm very supportive of it and I appreciate all the hard work. Thank you.
Trustee Jamal.
So I concur with that. It seems like this is long overdue for the district to join the 21st century and glad that process is moving forward. At the same time, this is a very substantial investment. I just actually opened up 6.1 and got a look at the costs and this is a, is very significant for our district. And so I want to, you know, I had a question about, you mentioned maintenance, but I have a question about maintenance because today's innovation is tomorrow's relic. So is in the, in these costs, is that, is maintenance and of the software and its reliability and security, is that part of this, this cost investment that we're on the cusp of making?
Let me speak to that and I'll have Barbara Mucci sort of add to this from an IT perspective. What's different about this software is it isn't something that we purchase, we install and it's housed here on our servers and that we manage like we have in the past with our current systems and a lot of our systems that you're legacy systems and some of the other vendors that we analyze. This is a software for subscription, a subscription for service, SaaS. And it's a much different, much different type of animal. And I'll have Bob sort of speak about the IT maintenance side of that for a minute so he can talk about resources and the difference with this type of service.
You've got a slide that says technological advantages that lists 12 of them. I think those can reduce to four main principles. The first is being student-centered. That is, when I registered at the University of Memphis decades ago, every interaction was mediated by a staff member. Today, the expectation is in an era of ATMs and buying things online that you will provide service direct to the consumer. We do that in the systems that we architect and you would think that would be common in the industry, but it's not. As Gartner says, "For higher education institutions to survive and grow in this environment, there must be a dramatic shift to a student-centric strategy." So they're the only major ERP vendor that's in line with our personal philosophy and what we believe is the future. Second is this is true cloud-based software. There's a distinction sometimes. You hear the words software as a service or SaaS and you hear cloud. There's really a difference. You can take 20th century technology built on relational databases where you're constantly calling out to hard drives for data and shuffling it back to the CPU. And you can offer that in someone else's service, a server room, and we often call that software as a service. But make no mistake, it is still kind of the previous centuries paradigm. This paradigm emerging from folks like Amazon, Google and a few others have what we call true clouds, which really bring together a couple of technologies. In-memory computing, which instead of using hard drives, it's now cost-effective to build massive arrays of solid-state devices. In other words, huge amounts of RAM so that you no longer have to make any database calls, which greatly accelerates the performance of a program. The next thing is that it has a different data model. And this goes back to the upgradability of it, the initial installation of it. And that is in an object-oriented model, you're combining, you're not keeping the code separate from the data. The data, the code, the business rules and the security role management is all encapsulated in the same place. So previous ERPs, the way you would upgrade is what we call a Tower of Babel problem. You can't deploy it on your campus unless you heavily customize it. And that customization took place in actual hard coding, that is the computer program you added lines to it. Then every time the company wanted to upgrade, it breaks a lot of that. So you see people getting so wary of that that very quickly you see almost every customer at a different stage of customization. What Workday does is to implement those through what's called the service layer in a way, in other words, in software settings rather than hard coding, which is a much more robust model. And that's why we expect that to reduce the cost of the setup, the installation, the maintenance, the upgrades and so forth. And another one is that there are some capabilities that are becoming extremely important, the ability to do advanced analytics and mobile access because that's increasingly the way that people are getting to these. And unlike existing ERPs where that is an afterthought, a bolt-on, Workday has architected analytics and mobility into the very DNA of its products. So that in a nutshell is kind of the four major principles that devolved those 12 advantages.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
You mentioned, which is probably plainly obvious, that the current process is labor-intensive. Presumably this process is less labor-intensive. So how, how does that affect our current workforce and will there be new training that will have to be implemented at the district in order to be able to fully implement the system?
Yes.
And what are the, are the costs of that, is the cost of that training factored into this, the costs that we see here?
Okay, so I hear a couple parts of questions there. First of all, you want to know whether labor savings are going to decrease, I mean, basically labor costs are going to decrease. We sense that it will. As we go through and start implementing, fully implementing the business processes that we hope to impose with this new system, we will be assessing each area, major function, folks' job descriptions and how it will impact them. What we're going to see is, we're not going to see someone like HR data entering something. Then next thing you know, the same data is being data entered again in payroll. Okay? So a lot of those things are duplicative and we are going to have savings there. However, we also have a lot of things that we have higher level needs, higher level, people are going to be doing more, instead of menial tasks, more service-oriented tasks and more reporting and things where they can really serve the colleges as they really would like to be served. Employees will be able to have more freed up time to be able to get things done quicker and we're going to be able to sort of reallocate their services based on our needs as we go through this process. So I can't give you a dollar amount because it's going to be based on a lot of decisions as we make them regarding labor savings, but it's going to be extremely more efficient and we'll be reallocating resources appropriately.
What about training of current employees?
Training of current employees, it's embedded in the costs. If you see the Cedar Crestone contract, you'll be able to see that as well as part of the Workday, one of the exhibits in there. It's built in. We want to be able to be successful. And so we're going to be doing training from day one as we go through the processes. And it's going to be, not only is the software going to be more intuitive, but we're going to have various types of training based on people's roles and responsibilities at the colleges and the district so that they'll be able to use the resources that they're going to have with this new software and be able to do a lot more with it.
Well, just, I just want to say that, one, I'm glad we're joining the 21st century. You know, this is just very significant and I hope that this process, given that stakeholders you had involved, will be implemented smoothly and that it is going to have an immediate effect based on the timeline you presented. Thank you.
Okay. Hold on just a second. I'll go ahead and put you in the line. What I didn't hear in an answer to Trustee Jamal's question on the cost versus the maintenance is it, is our ongoing costs involved in that maintenance? Is this a one-time purchase and then that's just part of the deal? Or are we going to be incurring costs down the line, five years, next year, 10 years, things of that nature?
Okay, so we have two different kinds of costs. One is the implementation partner. That's one time. We, and that would be with any vendor we would have selected. So we have to implement regardless of whether we had picked one of the legacy systems or Workday. So we would have had somebody come in and assist us with interfacing with all of our other systems, with doing data migration into the new system, et cetera. So that is one time. Once they, we have the implementation done, after probably a month or two after we are live, both, both phases, they'll go away. Okay? So that is one time. Then we have the Workday costs. That is a subscription. So we have, it's over, it's every year, but it's, it's, when you look at the cost over a five-year total cost of ownership compared to the legacy systems, it was actually less expensive than the other types of products. But we are paying on an annual basis. The other products, we would pay a one-time large upfront and then we would pay maintenance every year. This is different. We pay, it's more smoothed out and it's less costly than the other products were. So in the end, even though we had assessed on a variety of different measures to make sure that the products would do what we wanted to, both technologically as well as functionally, this was the better product as well as price.
Okay. And then the, the idea, the concept of the presentation we had a few months back about taking over, paying the bills and the payroll, I assume this was part of that aspect and why OCDE was involved?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, no, two, two things. OCDE was evolved in becoming fiscal accountable and that was part, that came out, that idea and the recommendation for that came out of business process analysis. And it wasn't very effective process we were doing currently. But OCDE has legal team that I use on contracts on a regular basis and we use the legal team to review this.
Okay. And then just going on the record, I officially understood 95% of what you said as a computer geek. So I don't know how everyone else did, but nice job.
Yes.
I'm telling you. What I haven't heard, I mean, I've heard that it has superb security, but you know, obviously that is a concern, especially with being cloud-based and with some of the recent hacking and so forth for information. And so can you speak a little bit to what you know about the security aspects to it?
The security, the increased security comes from better role management and it's because the roles in the security are encapsulated in the data objects. So in the old form of software, you're constantly calling from one place over to another. So you're going to fetch some data or now you're going to check the security rules. In this, you have kind of one unified vision of the truth that encapsulates all the data, all the business rules, all the security role management and all the application code. So it's much more tightly bound. And because it's cloud service, this will be executed every single time. So it's a simpler model where the security is much more integrally bound to the product itself.
Perfect, thank you. Trustee Jay.
My concern is, and I know you think it works very hard, the complexity of this program and the hugeness of it is beyond imagination. I think that you need to tackle it, whatever you want to call it, in units or sectors one at a time. To tackle the whole thing is incredible. Having gone through, for instance, just setting up the computer track of just who's enrolled and what and what their grade is when the course is done was gigantic. It took us years to do. And not only will training be very, very necessary for implementation, but it'll be necessary forever and ever and ever. It'll never stop. So I think overall, it may be a simpler model, but the process of getting there and maintaining it is incredibly big. And I just say, okay, we're all in favor of moving into the, what, 21st century, but watch out because there's a lot of expenses built in here, incredible amounts of training, incredible amounts of reeducating, never stops. So good luck and I'm all for it, but hang in there, that's the rule.
Trustee Wright.
Just a couple of comments. One, I want to applaud all of you for all the hard work you've done. I know what's involved and this is needed. I certainly support this. But just one quick question. What was your decision, James? I mean, were all the committees on board with this? Did they all want it? Was there any disagreements at all? Okay.
Just a comment here, just so you know, I've gone through this twice before and so when Deborah talked about this idea, I kind of grimaced. She led a charge and you saw the one side that said hundreds of people were involved. Literally, there were thousands of employee hours involved in the process. Deborah did a fabulous job coordinating the whole system. So I don't give praise very often, but in this case, Deborah deserves a lot of it. She championed this. And by the way, Trustee Jay, you're right, this will be abject difficult to implement. Once it's done, it's going to be better for everybody, but between today and that day, it's going to be a lot of hard work. So we've already anticipated that. The best thing about the budget process here is the staff development component. That was really focused, another part too, like we just went through an update for a major software system in human resources called People Admin. It's at People Admin 7-point-something from the People Admin 5.6. And so what you do is you almost shut the whole system down. Your staff is paralyzed while you shift over to the new system. On this system, they update it every Friday. So you have these micro implementations, so the security issue is addressed on a regular basis. And then once every four months, you have a major update. So it operates a little bit differently because it's a software as a service rather than you actually own the system upfront. So really the system, by the time you're done, did we have a lot of input? Yes, you'll see the presentation is not district services, it's the colleges and district services working together in harmony. And it involved thousands of hours. So really on this, this whole project from beginning to end, we've had a lot of input and coordination throughout the whole district. And a lot of this thanks to Deborah's leadership on this project.
I hate to be a stickler, but for the record, to answer Trustee Wright's question, we can't go with head shakes, we need a verbal yes or no. His question was about, was it unanimous?
Yes, it wasn't unanimous. Yes, it was.
All right. Trustee Lang.
Yes, my question is, is what sort of due diligence have we done on this? What other community college districts are using the software or who have we talked to that has currently implemented the software?
Okay. We've done quite a bit of due diligence. Workday is a fairly new product. They are in the higher-end industry and they are in, new to this product in the higher-end industry in the last few years. The human resources side of the house has been in implementation for many, many years longer than the financial. Some of the universities and colleges that we've talked to, done reference checking, had conference calls with them, by the steering committee and others, and also one-on-one conversations. We're Brown University, Rutgers, I'm trying to think, USC. We have a bunch of community colleges in Florida that are taking on Workday, Brower Community College and also Tallahassee and several others. Workday just signed, I believe, the, let's see, Washington system, the entire system. University of Texas, who else? We did, in San Mateo City. So we have a lot of references that we have gotten and we were able to look at their contracts, for instance. I feel we got a better deal than a lot of these people that are supposed to label larger than us and have a lot more legal teams than we do. And we, we feel that this is a good product.
Thank you.
Trustee Milchker.
Yeah, I think the board is asking really excellent questions. I have heard that Deborah Fitzsimmons has done a really excellent job leading this, leading this project, this, to find a whole new system for HR and for the fiscal services. I also agree with Trustee Padberg that the most, we're a people business. The most important thing that we can do is hire the best people. And there's two new full-time employees, two, full-time faculty members on the agenda today and those are lifetime, that's, you know, 25 years that we have these people and it's several million dollar investments. So we need to have all the tools we can to make sure we do the best job we have to hire the best employees. I know all of us have said this and I have said this also. And the second most important thing we do is make sure that we're okay financially, that we stay in business. So we're here for our students. So keep us apprised as how this is going along. I thank all the staff and all the many people that have spent the thousands of hours researching this and keep us apprised of how it's going. I'd really like to know how our staff is learning it and how the program is working out. Thank you.
Okay, seen no more requests to speak. We'll go ahead and vote on the motion of 6.1A on the Workday agreement. So we have a six yes votes, one abstain and student advisory yes vote, so the motion passes. So then now I need to entertain a motion for 6.1B.
Second.
Okay. And figuring that we had our discussion already on that, we'll go ahead and vote. And we have six yes votes, one abstain and one student advisory yes vote. So it does pass. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I did want to introduce Representative from Workday that's here tonight to see how the conversation went and see if he, we needed any assistance. His name is Zach Bard and he's the sales manager for this project or account manager, I should say.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, I guess.
Thank you.
Did have Chancellor Porter would like to say a few words?
Yeah, several people have already acknowledged how much work has gone into this project and it's been a real effort. But I want to give special thanks to Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons. She has put in an unbelievable amount of work shepherding this project through. And I'm not diminishing anyone else's contribution because they've done a lot. The other thing to remember is she did this while she was negotiating the ATEP agreement with the City of Tustin, which was also a very, very large project. So she's accomplished a great deal. I'd like to recognize her. I'd like to recognize her.
I also forgot to mention that we do have full reports of the business process analysis. It's over here by this printer by the dais. Feel free to take the full report if you're interested, because a lot of work did go into the ones that we did do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll go back on the agenda then to the consent calendar. Before we take a motion on the consent calendar, are there any polls?
Yes.
I have, Trustee Wright?
5.3, just one quick question.
5.3, a quick question. Any others?
Yes.
5.15.
5.15. Trustee Jamal.
5.5, 5.16, 5.21.
Okay, and I'm going to poll 5.6, 5.7 very quickly.
Can you read, can you read those again?
All right, so we are pulling 5.3, 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, 5.15, 5.16, and 5.21. Do I have a motion for the balance of the consent calendar?
I think Bill Jay will move.
Trustee Jay?
Second.
And then second? Okay. So, if we can go ahead and have a vote on the balance of the consent calendar minus those polls?
Trustee Milchker. Keep pushing it, it's not working.
Okay.
You see I'm pushing it?
Our button isn't working.
My button's not working, I keep pushing it.
How are you voting?
Yes, yes.
All right, so can you display everyone's vote? No?
They're working on it.
Okay, so let's vote by mouth. Let's get it over with.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, passes unanimously, seven yes votes, one student advisory yes vote. Okay, so 5.3, the quick question.
Just a quick question, it's the liberal arts division, it's not the liberal arts and learning resources division now. That's correct. Good catch. Just to cross out, and liberal, and learning resources.
Are you moving the item with that?
And I'll move.
Second.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seen no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item if we can.
I'm pushing, it's not working. I'm pushing yes.
Okay, just do everything.
All right, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, it's unanimous, seven votes, one student advisory yes vote. 5.5.
That was me. So, I think it mentions transfer degrees for political science and anthropology that are transferable to CSU, and I was just wondering, are these transfers applicable to UC's system?
Actually, no. If you recall, Senate Bill 1440, which was established two years ago, was specifically for the Cal State University and the community colleges. So, we would love to have it at UC, I know there's talk about it, but no, that's a separate.
Thank you.
Yeah, nothing looks right. I thought my mic was wrong.
We have a motion to approve and a second?
No, I didn't, well, I plugged this one, but I didn't unplug anything else.
So, all those in favor of 5.5, say aye, please?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? Oh, it's working now.
Yeah, it's working, okay.
Okay. We have seven yes votes, one student advisory yes vote.
Okay.
Let's hope that this is part of the new technology upgrade. I had two very quick questions on 5.6, 5.7, and it's just, really just a clarification. In reading the background, it says that we've been working with these two companies for over 30 years. Is there a reason why we only do it a year at a time? Do we, I mean, do we have issues that something might go wrong?
We do an RFP, and we can only have a contract for five years per ed code, for public contract code, and then we go back out again, and so this is how the instructional area had preferred to do it three-year, and depending on the vendor, three-year and one-year renewals, that kind of thing.
Just seems like we could have a little more loyalty than one year, when we've been working with them so long.
This is a renewal for the additional year.
Okay. Then I'll go ahead and move 5.6 and 5.7.
Second.
All right, can I move? I can't move.
Yeah, sure, you can vote.
Whatever. All right. Go ahead and vote on the items.
All right, I vote, there we go.
All right. We have seven yes votes and one student advisory yes. 5.15, who was that?
That was.
Trustee Lang.
Put your mic on, please.
And the reason that I had pulled this item, which I think has been, or is being amended, is that, once again, one of my clients is on here as a subcontractor on page 23 of 25. It's exhibit, it says Exhibit B Approved Sub-Consultants, it's number four, but my understanding is that they've got the wrong company there, and it should be Kling Consulting Group, Inc. And I guess I would, if that is correct, I'd want to make that amendment so that I could vote on this item.
That is correct. When the contractor supplied the subconsultants for this agreement, he supplied number four, Caesar Kling Consultants, Inc., and they had a name change, and so it has changed, and we will make that amendment before we do the.
It's not a name change, it's a new company.
Reformed company, but this is Kling Consulting Group. We did check with the vendor.
Okay.
All right, with that, do we have a motion?
I've moved and seconded.
All right. We'll go ahead and vote on the item. Seven yes votes, one student advisory yes vote. 5.16.
That was me. My, we had some conversations today about this, I just wanted clarification. I think the original contractor for the life sciences project went bankrupt, and I guess my question was, in terms of our contracting or bidding process, is there a trigger point or threshold for us to request a financial audit of prospective contractors and vendors? Is, from them during the bidding process, to anticipate financial difficulties?
We do ask for that information in the RFP, so we'll go ahead and, we're going to address that. Yes, she's going to explain it right now.
Hello. So, yes, we do. Before we accept bids from any contractors, we have a prequalification process, which does include financials. At the time that we bid this project, you'll recall that we were falling off a cliff economically in the construction world, and so the financials were reporting the previous year, or maybe the previous two years, depending on when we were asking for the bids to be provided. In this case, it, the financial information that we received was from two previous years, and the contractor was already starting to lose his business, not reflected in the financials that we evaluated.
So, what's the fix going forward, if any?
Design, build, and lease, leaseback.
Okay.
I'll move the item.
You have a motion?
Oh, Trustee.
Second.
All right, and then, so we have a motion and a second, and then we have a request to speak on the item. Trustee Lang.
Put his mic on.
Ms. Delena, you have another question? You have your mic on?
I was just wondering why we had, I guess we are seeking, as I understand it, gold lead status on this?
Yes.
And that we flunked the first time around, and I wanted to find out what the issue was on that.
It's one of 46 points that we flunked on, so the rest of the points are all packaged and ready to be submitted, and we're just waiting for this very last issue. The issue is, the pump that is in the cooling system for the HVAC is too small, and it needs to be replaced. So, that's been ordered, and it's ready to be replaced, we're thinking a week, two weeks, and then we can submit, and we are tracking for gold, lead gold certification on this project.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Seen no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. We have seven yes votes and one student advisory yes vote. Last item polled was 5.21.
That was me.
That was Trustee Jamal.
So, it's an issue that I asked the chancellor about when I first came on the board, and I know Trustee Don Wagner had asked about it in the past, and so, like, my understanding is that we have 30, some 30 duplicative memberships to various associations, and that duplicative means that IVC and Saddleback are both paying the same entity, the same dues for the same membership, or the district, and IVC or the district in Saddleback College, and I do have concerns about this. And I, one, I want to know how much, if you don't know today, how much this costs the district in terms of duplicative memberships, and then, second, I would really urge us to reach out to these associations, and the reason being, some of them do have policies on how they define an entity. I know the chancellor has spent a lot of his tenure here making sure we're not siloed, that we're one district, mending fences, making sure that we work collaboratively. Lord knows, we spent a lot of time on that issue, and I think that to pay these duplicative memberships, I have a lot of concerns about it, and I would hope that we can reach out to these various associations and have this conversation, because some of these, some of the dues are nominal, but some are not. So, I'd ask for your comment, please.
Yes. As you noticed in the list, there are some memberships, and I counted 27 actually when we went down through, that might be duplicative as far as the association name between IVC and Saddleback College, for instance. Some are national associations that require that a college-specific membership be had, if you're going to join, has to be college-specific, not district-wide. The district, they don't recognize as entity, depending on what the nature of the association is. In those particular cases, it is required that we have to have a separate membership for IVC math department, for instance, versus Saddleback College math department, or whatever the association is. However, when I did peruse the membership list, I did see a few opportunities, particularly local chambers of commerce, that kind of thing, where we can definitely take a look at those and see if we can coordinate, so we're paying only one, you know, chamber membership versus two, that kind of thing. Sometimes it means materials. Materials that are received, they only allow one primary rep, and they only get invited to different things, that kind of thing, so we'd have to look at those individually. But definitely, we can work on that. I think that's a good suggestion.
And I believe President Burnett, you had some input on this?
Yeah, just real quick, I just would like our trustees and everybody to know that one of the things that I've been very impressed with at our district and everybody, at district services, or IVC, and Saddleback, is on every issue, whether it's memberships, or any contract, or anything we have going forward, almost on a weekly basis, we are always looking for ways that are economized and get the best bang for our resources and our public taxpayer dollars. So, I do want you to be aware that we do a really good job here trying to find ways to get on a district-wide basis. When one of our individual colleges has an opportunity comes up, we often, if not every time, will look and call our sister college to ask, hey, are you involved in this? If not, maybe we can do it together. And I'll tell you, we save lots of resources and dollars on a, really on a weekly basis. Just want everyone to be aware of that.
Okay. Do I have a motion on it? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All right, so I have a motion and a second, I have a request to speak from Trustee Lang.
The one thing that stood out to me on this one was, is almost the entire amount of the increase from, you know, the one period to the next seemed to be attributable to a fairly large membership at Saddleback College. That was the Education Advisory Board Community College Forum, which is on page five of 12 of the Saddleback memberships. And I thought that the other members, I got an answer to that, but I thought the other members would benefit from knowing exactly what that, what that buys us, because it's fairly expensive, $29,500.
If I can, I can start in, and then obviously President Burnett could join in. The Education Advisory Board membership is for that TAC grant, that very, very large grant that we accepted several months ago at Saddleback College for $2.7 million. And it's called a membership by them, but it's really what I would call a subscription services to research, so they can access research databases, that kind of thing. That's, it's part of that activity that's being done under that grant. So, it was paid for under grant funds, and they call it a membership, but it really is closer to subscription services, and because the entity calls it a membership, I wanted to make sure that was included under the membership list, just to be on the safe side.
Thank you.
All right, seen no more requests to speak. We'll go ahead and vote on the item. Passes unanimously, seven votes yes, and one student advisory yes vote. All right, moving on to 6.2, Saddleback College Grant Acceptance. Do I have a motion for that?
I move the item.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion or requests to speak? Seen none, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Passed unanimously, seven votes yes, and one student advisory yes vote. All right, moving on to 6.2, Saddleback College Grant Acceptance. Do I have a motion for that?
I move the item.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion or requests to speak? Seen none, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Trustee Padberg.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Trustee Jamal.
Oh.
There we go. Seven yes votes, one student advisory yes vote. 6.3, Community College, California Community College Trustee Board of Directors nominations. Have any nominations?
Would anybody like to?
Give them one more year. You guys all heard that, that's on the record, right?
Right, on the record.
All right, so seeing, hearing none, I guess we'll move on to 6.4, Authorization of Payment, Trustee Absent from Board Meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Go ahead and vote on the item. We have six yes votes, one abstention, and one student advisory yes vote.
Anybody could come up with a chance?
She just set the bar real high, didn't she? 6.5, ATEP Site Foundation Infrastructure Demolition. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Trustee Jay, second from Trustee Jamal. Seen no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item.
Trustee Jamal, vote.
Oh, I thought I did.
We have seven yes votes, one student advisory yes vote. 6.6, ATEP Site Foundation Infrastructure Demolition Notice of Completion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion from Trustee Padberg, second from Trustee Jamal. Seen no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Seven yes votes, one student advisory yes vote, passes. 6.7, Technology and Applied Science Building Swing Space, Saddleback College Architectural Agreement.
Second.
Motion from Trustee Lang, second from Trustee Wright. Seen no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Seven yes votes, one student advisory yes vote, passes. 6.8, Board Policy Revision, this is for review and study.
So moved.
Review and study.
Got a motion for review and study from Trustee Lang, and a second from Trustee Seen no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on approving review and study.
Trustee.
And we have seven yes votes and one student advisory yes vote. 6.9, Academic Personnel Actions.
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Trustee Jay, second from Trustee Jamal. Do we need anything from?
Nope, all set, thank you.
Nothing from Vice Chancellor Bouquet? All right, no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Seven yes votes, one student advisory yes vote, passes. 6.10, Classified Personnel Actions.
Move the item.
Have a motion from Trustee Padberg, second from Trustee Jamal. Any changes? No. See a request to speak from Trustee Wright.
Just one notice, Chris McDowell is the dean of math, science, engineering at Saddleback College. Yes. As a footnote. Not IVC.
Oh. I'll accept that amendment to correct the item.
It's Exhibit A.
It's a sneaky way to steal somebody.
Yeah, right. Talk about personnel actions.
No, no, it's an error, typo.
All right, so we'll go ahead and vote on the item with that correction. We have seven yes votes, one student advisory yes vote, passes unanimously. 6.11, Bonded Sabbatical Recommendations.
Second.
Motion for Trustee Jay, second for Trustee Padberg. Seen no requests to speak, go ahead and vote on the item. Seven yes votes, one student advisory yes vote, passes unanimously. 7.1.
There's one correction on that, too.
Oh.
You're too late.
Not anymore. Somebody just got a new job.
Okay.
You want to go ahead and list what it is?
It's just on the, it's on the background, it says, eight requested sabbaticals for fall, and five, and then I haven't printed, it says six. Small error.
Somebody doesn't get one. Have a lottery. Okay. Okay. All right, 7.1, List of Board Requested Reports. There were none. Oh, I'm sorry, there were two, but this is just informational. 7.2, Saddleback and College, Irvine Valley College Speakers. Seeing no one requests to speak. 7.3, Basic Aid Report.
No changes since last month.
Okay, no requests to speak. Move on to 7.4, Facilities Plan Status Report. No requests to speak. 7.5, Monthly Financial Status Report. Seeing no requests to speak. 7.6, Quarterly Financial Status Report. Seeing no requests to speak. 7.7, Retiree OPEB Trust Fund. I will, I will mention it was, I went to the same presentation that trustee Lang went at, from School Services, and they did mention retirement trust funds, specifically OPEB. And it was very nice to know that we're very healthy on that compared to others. So, a nice job for managing that.
That was one thing I, they do a great job here. How many districts in the state, I could ask Debra, who have retirement payments due, have them covered? I'll bet there's not more than a couple, and we're one of them.
You are correct. Only a couple. Of seventy-two community college districts.
Wow, wow.
It's a huge liability for some folks.
Nice job.
Good job.
All right, so then now we're on our reports for administration and governance groups. We have Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Dan Walsh, Saddleback College Academic Senate President. We finished a very successful in-service week, as all of you know, and it was nice seeing some of you. And for those of you who were at my president's report, I won't be talking about giant sequoias tonight. We're up to over six thousand hours of flex hours, our professional development commitment of our faculty. That's on par to beat next, last year's total. This is the first semester of our College Student Success Coordinating Committee, led by our two faculty coordinators, Bruce Gilman from English and Penny Scaff, our matriculation counselor. Though this is great for the college, it's unfortunate for the Senate, because Bruce Gilman was to be our president-elect for next year. So, we'll be working to find a new president of the Senate for next year. The curriculum process continues tonight. You saw two new transfer degrees, anthropology and political science. And at your next meeting, we'll be a batch, I just read twenty-nine pages of curriculum changes for the college. And thank you, Dr. Burnett, for pointing out all the wonderful things faculty are up to in the president's report. We really are amazing.
Faculty Association.
Good evening. The Faculty Association's Professional Week activities went well. I'd like to thank trustees Milchiker and Prendergast for joining us at our luncheon. I'm sorry that more of you weren't available. On Friday, January twenty-fourth, the Faculty Association sponsored a luncheon and presentation on the Affordable Care Act for our part-time faculty. And this past weekend, three Saddleback faculty members attended the CTA State Council Meeting in Los Angeles, and we learned that a number of districts around the state have given salary increases ranging from five to six-point-five percent. So, that is very encouraging, considering we are getting ready to go into contract negotiations. And we are amazing.
Irvine Valley College Academic Senate.
Kathy Schmider, Academic Senate President at Irvine Valley College. I'd like to reiterate that Glenn's president's welcome this year at our Professional Development Week was, I shouldn't say blessedly short, but it was definitely short. And that meant that I didn't have to do a presentation, for which I am very grateful. Not that you don't, that I won't speak, but I'm still grateful. Scheduling it this way permitted a broader participation by the college community, especially those members of the community, classified staff in particular, but also faculty members such as counselors, who can't take the entire day to do all the morning festivities and also another important presentation in the afternoon. And so, coalescing them into the morning presentation allowed a much broader representation of the college community. And I think everybody's grateful that he did that. Excuse me. It was particularly interesting that Ms. Ginsburg's presentation, one of the major themes as she went through all sorts of different kinds of scenarios and problems that people might have, personnel problems that people might have, that one of the themes was good communication. It came in lots of different guises and lots of different ways of saying it, but at the base, if people communicate well, it averts, or at least minimizes and mitigates a lot of the kinds of personnel problems that we can have at the college and at the district. The rest of Professional Development Week was, as always, full of a wide variety of presentations, including the Faculty Association wonderful luncheon and events.
Where we were all amazing.
Where we were all amazing. And I'd like to recognize, in particular, my amazing colleague, Rupa Mather, who you met last month, who was here in my stead for organizing our flex activities and a whole host of other things, including our various lecture programs. But she deserves some recognition. We're poised on the leading edge of the upcoming semester. In fact, we've only had one iteration of each weekday so far. My colleague Dan pointed out that this, today was the first day that he met his Monday class. So, we're just at the, at the beginning, and we, I don't have a whole lot to say about what we've done. But on a personal note, I'd like to say that we've, that my school, my department, has just started teaching in our bright, shiny, new life science building. And there, of course, are some glitches, because it's new, and all new things do, but it sure is bright and shiny. It was a pleasure to take a walk around campus with trustee Milchiker, who was, who spent the day with us. And our walk around campus included my introduction to the new building. I hadn't seen it since it was still in progress. So, we explored it together, and that was, that was a great deal of fun. I'd also like to mention that participating in the BPAs, and I went to almost all of the BPAs, and also the semi-public meetings with the vendors, was actually surprisingly interesting. I was astonished, I have to say. I went reluctantly at first, but I, I found them very interesting. And I'd just like to point out that all faculty who went to any of those events went on their own time during periods of time for which they were not being otherwise compensated. So, we are amazing. Thank you.
Okay. Associate Vice Chancellor Economic Development.
Good evening, thank you. I think I'll rely on my written report tonight, and that's all.
Okay. Vice Chancellor Technology and Learning Services.
On behalf of Jim Gaston and myself, I'd like to thank those of, the folks that came, including trustee Milchiker, to our annual geek report, where we not only got some very useful focus group session feedback on the upcoming waitlist product, but we talked, I had very interesting discussions about the future of both gaming and gamification in higher education.
All right. Vice Chancellor Human Resources.
Thank you to the Board of Trustees for approving the HR financial system. You've now given us a massive amount of work to do in the next eighteen months. We really appreciate that. That said, I also think the faculty are amazing.
Vice Chancellor Business Services.
Well, I have to say that now, that you, everybody else around the table has said that. Of course I do. Faculty and students are amazing, so I really appreciate them. I just wanted to give you highlights of the state budget update. The governor, as you probably are aware, on January ninth, provided the governor's budget. We're looking at an increase to higher education, well, actually K through fourteen, of about eleven-point-four percent. For us, I wanted to reiterate what trustee Lang says, that's not new money to our district necessarily, particularly on the COLA and growth dollars. Those come from our existing property tax revenues, because we are self-sufficient. But however, we are looking at around a three-percent growth model right now, and less than one percent in COLA at the moment. We're also looking at more money being infused into student success programs, as you probably are aware. The theme this year was student access, success, and equity. And so, on various categories, additional funding is going to be put towards those areas. In addition, I just wanted to mention that our fiscal accountability status is moving along. We've already had the audit take place through the Orange County Department of Education, and it was successful. So, they will be providing recommendation to us prior to our July first date, on which we would go fiscally accountable. So, we'll report back when we have the news. Thank you.
All right. Irvine Valley College Classified Senate.
Good evening, President Prendergast. Always a pleasure to be here. Thank you. Ben Cooper, President of Classified Senate over at IVC. First, we'd like to thank President Rockmore for the leadership retreat in the fall. It was a wonderful experience to work and learn from faculty and administrators and classified leadership. Second, I enjoyed being a judge at the Astounding Inventions of about a dozen fifth-grade inventions, from solar-powered automobile controllers to medicine helpers. So, it was really a nice experience. Special thanks to the maintenance and facilities and foundation for working together and setting up all the tables and the logistics of that event for four-hundred students that participated and their families. That's one of our biggest crowds that come to our campus. And our hearts and prayers go out to district classified employee Anita McDonald, that recently passed away. And, and we hope the best for her. Thank you.
California School Employees Association.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Scott Ferguson-Green, President of CSCE, Chapter 586. I wanted to thank the Board of Trustees who attended all the Flex Week events. It's very encouraging for the classified staff to see members of the Board of Trustees attend those events. Very briefly, I recently attended a humanitarian fundraiser in the Pasadena area. And one of the speakers was the council general of Great Britain. And he was able to talk about some of the government labor issues that they have over in Great Britain. And one of the things that he mentioned was, a lot of the private sector corporations have turned over the control of the labor force to the counties or the parishes. And so, it's kind of a different way of doing business, especially since most of, of the fact that we're intertwined with the global economy, as it changes, so does doing business. So, naturally, I gave him a few perspectives on CSCE and how we try to work with management in trying to solve a lot of the economic problems. And so, we hope to continue to do that. But I did learn a lot more about what's happening globally between management and labor. Thank you.
All right. Saddleback College Classified Senate.
Thank you, Mike Soder, Classified Senate, Saddleback College. I just wanted to say congratulations to all of the amazing classified staff at Saddleback College, to the start of another semester. A lot of changes happening at the college, the buildings, the construction, the roads, the parking. And the staff are handling it with grace and dignity and helping students find their way. And I'd also like to say thank you to the staff again for allowing me the opportunity to be of service for them. And I hope, and I'm excited for another semester where I hopefully can continue to do work for them and bring them what they hope out of their classified senate. Thank you.
All right. With that, we will adjourn this evening in memoriam for, close our meeting in memory of Anita McDonald, one of our human resource specialists who passed away unexpectedly this month. She'd been with the district since two thousand and eight. She was a valued colleague and friend to many, and we mourn her loss. Thank you, have a good evening.